Okay, we're recording now.
Welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Eastchester Fire Commissioners, held on March 29, 2021 remotely on Google Meet. So I will make a motion to call the meeting to order. Can I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we called motion, uh, the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. And we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God,
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Alright, so the first matter up is something that we left at the monthly meeting, the renewal of the property and casualty insurance. So I will make the motion to renew that, if I could have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, second by Paul Ranalone. So it is hereby resolved to renew the general liability insurance offered by Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services, effective April 1, 2021, at the cost of $107,527.76 for the year. Arch Insurance Group will be the carrier. Commissioner Roach make a motion. Commissioner Ranalone seconded, so I will call the board. Commissioner Ranalone?
Aye.
Commissioner Keating?
Aye.
Commissioner Carlo?
Aye.
And Commissioner Roach is an aye. So we can instruct Jamie Chief that she can pay that insurance tomorrow, and we have insurance for another year.
Will do.
Thank you. So the next amount on the agenda is a resolution to hire a attendance investigator? And open up to the board for any comments if necessary? Well, it's, uh, it is hereby resolved that district legal counsel is authorized to retain and engage appropriate vendors to monitor, investigate, and report on sick time usage for FD personnel, fire district personnel, at the cost not to exceed $180,000 per year, effective immediately. Commissioner Roach will make that motion? Second by?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And I'll call the roll. Commissioner Ranalone?
Aye.
Commissioner Keating?
Aye.
Commissioner Carlo?
Uh, no.
And Commissioner Roach is an aye. So we accept that resolution motion, Paul? You like on it accordingly?
We'll do. Yes, sir.
Thank you. So the next issue then is to rescind the probationary appointment to lieutenant. And again, Commissioner Roach will make that motion, if I could have a second?
Second.
Hey, Tom, can we, I'd like to hear from the chief on this first, if I may.
Okay.
Um, well, I'm assuming the board is going to vote to rescind the probationary appointment of Lieutenant Badge Number 155. It's... I don't, you know, I don't know what I can say, Mr. Sweeney, it's, uh...
Let me just say this, commissioners and chief, normally we don't discuss personnel matters in a public meeting. So to the extent that there needs to be some sort of discussion, I would recommend that we go into an executive session as opposed to doing it in this format.
Right, and I'd like to, Tom, I'd like to hear the chief's recommendation. So... If you want to vote, take, if you want to vote, take a vote, but I personally like it.
And we have spoken about this number of times in the executive session, and the chief has made his recommendation in the January meeting, but certainly he's free to make it again, and probably should as the chief manager of the department.
As Commissioner Roach said, we did have a executive session in the meeting room at Bronxville Village Hall. And, you know, I expressed my opinion at that time. It hasn't changed. If you need to hear it again, if you'd like to go to executive session at this time, you can adjourn the meeting. I could send a link to an executive session, or if you want to postpone it for another time, however you prefer to do it.
Do you recall a discussion in January, Brian? Keating?
I don't, Tom.
Alright, so do we need to go to an executive session?
We want to vote on it now, we can take a vote.
Okay, uh, I mean, what do you recommend, counsel?
It sounds like the need to go to executive session has passed. And I think, as I understand, Commissioner Keating, he's okay with a vote on the pending motion to be had.
Okay, then, I will therefore make the motion that it be hereby resolved that probationary appointment of the employee with badge number 155 to be to the title lieutenant is hereby revoked, and that said employee is restored to the title of firefighter, effective immediately. So Commissioner Roach makes that motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, and I'll call the roll. Commissioner Ranalone?
Aye.
Commissioner Keating?
Aye.
Commissioner Carlo?
No.
And Commissioner Roach is an aye, so that resolution has passed, and that we rescind that reservation, that reappointment. And so that leaves us with the end of the agenda, which is to promote a provisional lieutenant. Since we have a spot open, I think it's intelligent to fill that immediately, rather than to have more overtime accumulate. So it is hereby resolved to promote firefighter Eric Castielo to the provisional position of lieutenant, with a start date on or after March 29, 2021. Pay, compensation, and other benefits per the current collective bargaining agreement with IAF Local 916. Position is provisional and under civil service, is a competitive position. The candidate must test and be reachable in the next civil service list to be considered for probation appointment. So Commissioner Roach makes that resolution, can I have a second?
Aye.
And then I'll call the roll. Commissioner Ranalone?
Aye.
Commissioner Keating?
Aye.
Commissioner Carlo?
No.
And Commissioner Roach is an aye. So that resolution also passes?
Tom, can I, can I, can I interject? So those, the two lieutenants who were provisionally promoted should make sure that if they want to remain as a lieutenant after the list, they should sign up for the list.
Very good, and that's open at this time. So that's basically...
Is there a deadline, Tom? Is there a deadline to sign up for the list yet, do we know?
It's three week period, so I'm going to say that's very close, within the next two weeks.
Okay, so they should know. They should go in and sign up.
So we did, other matters had come up that we need to talk about and decide how the board wants to move forward. The chief researched for us the radio preventive maintenance package. And last year we paid, I think, $8,800 for the year. This year's bill came in at $10,300. I asked the chief to find out how much it costs just to have the preventive maintenance annually, and that invoice came in today's email, and that was about $3,300. So basically a $7,000... What we're basically paying $7,000 for, and the chief will correct me if I'm wrong, is so that we can, if we detect that there's something wrong, we can immediately call the company, and they guarantee, I believe, 24-hour repair service. But if we don't pay that $7,000 and just pay the $3,300 to have the preventive maintenance done annually, then we're not guaranteed 24-hour service. We may get it, it might be 48 hours, it could be 72 hours. So that's something that the board has to decide, how we want to move forward. So I'll open up the comments, if any commissioners have any?
Is that true, chief? Is that basically what it is?
Well, there's a couple other advantages to having the maintenance agreement. You get a lower labor rate on any work they have to do. Any warranty stuff, we will have to pay for them to come in, diagnose the problem, to remove the radio and send it out to Motorola for repair. All that will be done at time and material, where if it's a warranty issue and we have a maintenance agreement, that's all covered under the maintenance agreement. Also, like you said, it's, it, you know, if they're busy and we're not one of their maintenance agreement customers, if a radio goes down, they'll be, okay, if it goes down on a Friday afternoon, they may come on a Tuesday, you know? So we're no longer on their priority list for, you know, responding to an emergency radio repair. I would prefer to keep the maintenance agreement. Our radios are a lifeline to our dispatchers. You know, we can save a few thousand dollars, but, you know, I think we're taking a chance. If our radios go down and we can't communicate to the dispatchers, you know, we really want to get someone out there as soon as possible. That's my opinion.
And the savings is almost 300%. I mean, we, it costs $3,300 versus $10,300. So, but I'm interested to know the difference in the hourly rate. You mentioned there was a difference, but you didn't tell us the two rates.
Yeah, I asked her for that specific question, and she, you know, I forwarded you her email. She didn't get me that specific rate. I don't know if she was able to get it in time. I specifically asked, what is the price difference for the hourly rate? So I do not have that. She did not provide it. So unfortunately, I don't have that specific dollar amount for the hourly rate.
Any comments, colleagues?
Tom, I'm not interested in voting on it. We just got the email, so... If you want to continue, that's fine, but I'm, I'm... I will table it to the next time.
And actually... Sorry.
I personally would table it to the next, but if you want to move to make, if you want to make a vote, go for it.
Chief, is this something that has to be decided, like, within soon?
Well, it expires April 1. Now, there's, you know, if we renew it, they'll, you know, grandfather us in, I'm sure. As far as, like, you know, will they come out and respond after April 1? If we have an emergency visit on a Saturday, I don't know. You know, I would have to check with them to see if they would, you know, float us an extra month or something. They may want to charge us for that extra month, that $800. So, you know, our contract expires March 31.
Well, last year, this is interesting, because last year we approved it in July. So you basically paid back three months of service that you didn't get? It doesn't run from July to July? It, so when we finally approved it last July, it just basically paid it, and it was for the year.
It was for the year, yes.
Or three months earlier.
Because their service technician passed away, I think I mentioned it at the time. That's why there was a delay in being invoiced. Their service technician that usually, you know, gives them the amount of work to be done, you know, the radios that have to be maintained, locations, they didn't have that information, so it took them a little while to come and do an inventory on our radios and, you know, prepare the bill.
And I actually do remember, as soon as we did pay it and they came to do the preventive maintenance, there was an additional charge of $2,500 for something that they found, correct?
I don't know about that. They found a tie line that was down from Optimum. They wouldn't...
Warranty.
Yeah, there wouldn't be a charge.
The very next month. I said, how do we get another bill from these guys? Are we just paying them $800?
I think, I think that was for my car.
Because we do have something that's actually...
Yeah, maybe we can move along, Tom. We're going to table it.
I think that bill was for the radio for one of the vehicles.
Okay, my mistake. I apologize, guys. Because we do actually have something very important to vote on tonight, and we need to allocate. The chief went down to the Historical Society, town-owned property, and they're going to allow us to use that property as a fire station, temporarily while we have the floor repaired in the Chester Heights Station. So we need to allocate resources for the chief. He was down there with fire prevention and looked at the work that needs to be done. What did you think the estimate was?
Oh, well, we, first of all, we have not been given permission yet. The property is owned by the town. The next town board meeting is April 12. And the Historical Society has not voted on it. I think their next meeting is also in April. So first of all, we have to get permission. It looks like they will give us permission as long as, you know, we make a few... The town wanted us to have a fire inspection to make sure the building was up to code for the firefighters to be in there. The exit lighting is not compliant, so we would have to have two new exit lights put in. We'd have to add CO detectors. There's no CO detectors in the building. So, you know, a few things like that. We'd have to hire an electrician to come in, maybe do a few thousand dollars worth of repairs. I think there's also an issue with their cooling system. I believe the heat is working okay. But Commissioner Carlo mentioned that the AC unit may be on the fritz. And since we're going to be there over the summer, potentially, we want to have that fixed. You know, again, I don't know what that would cost. We would have to have somebody come and check it out.
It sounds like it all needs to be fixed anyway, right, chief?
Uh, the... I don't know what you mean by that. What do you mean it all has to be fixed?
The lighting has to be, it should be fixed whether we go and occupy it anyway, right? The fire, the exiting.
Well, we're changing the use.
It's occupancy.
Yeah, we're changing it from...
It's a public occupancy, but now we're going to make it a dwelling occupancy, so now we have to make sure that it's up to that.
Right.
So, and, but it is a town-owned building, so anything that we put into it, you know, any resources that we use from the taxpayer that goes into a town-owned building that obviously improves town-owned property, so I have no qualms about it. It sounds like this is something that maybe we don't have to vote on. I just wanted to give you the resources so that you could move forward. If you want to wait till our April monthly meeting to decide this, that's fine with me also.
Yeah, I have no problem waiting. It's, you know, I haven't gotten any sort of construction schedule from the new contractors. You know, I don't know if they've gotten their permits straightened out. So we're still waiting to make sure that our architect engineer has followed up with all the conditions of the town plan reader. So, you know, it's, you know, it could be a bit, so...
And the last time that I made contact with the contractor, Nathan and Paul was included in the email. Nathan informed us that an AIA, I believe it is, but an official form had to be filled out. It was in the bid document. I thought that it was the contractor's responsibility to fill out and then get to me to sign. Am I corrected that, or should I be initiating that, Paul?
I think usually it's, it's, they're the contractor that's doing the work, fills the AIA document, we review it, and approve us the form. That's the way it would normally go.
So I'll try to reach out to them via email, including all the commissioners, and ask her to, when she expects that, to have that to us, and then we'll find out. So we can put this off to the next meeting then, because, you know, it's been a week since we talked to them. So I'm sure it's going to get going. We kind of gave them a short notice. So they'll be in contact as when they're ready to start the work. But I'll get an estimate of what it would cost to move the plates, so that we can include that when we give you the resources to improve the facility, and we also need to protect the driveway. That might as well be included in when we make the resolution, chief.
Yeah, I was going to try to get maybe Vinco, since they're going to have their workers on the site, to see if they would be interested, since they have to remove those plates anyway as part of their construction. If they could arrange to move them up to the parking lot at the library at the Historical Society. That might be the cheapest way to go, since they have to move them out of the building anyway.
Alright, so you want to initiate that with an email?
Yeah, I'll contact Patricia and ask her.
Very good. That sounds awesome. So do we have any other comments, commissioners?
Well, yeah, there's a thing we've been left over, I think, for well over a year now. That's computers in each firehouse, as well as each piece of fire apparatus. I know, I'm sure every department in the country has computers in the firehouses to aid with dispatching, as well as teaching. Especially in this time, these times now, the computers could be used to have remote teaching for different classes that the firefighters take throughout the year. And the dispatching as far as the apparatus, so that information can be transmitted from either the dispatcher to the apparatus or from the apparatus, if he has to write a report or anything, or send information to the dispatcher, it can be done via computer.
Chief, is the firehouses, I think you said that the firehouses aren't wired to receive the computers yet?
Headquarters and Station 5 both have internet through the department. Station 2, 3, and 4 do not. So we would have to have either Optimum, you know, online, or Verizon FiOS come provide internet service. And then, you know, we could hook up the computers at that point. And, you know, and there may be some cabling inside the buildings, but Timmy, you know, did some of that at headquarters for the Wi-Fi. So it's more important that, you know, if I'd be given guidance on if I can, you know, get a price between FiOS and Optimum voice, or Optimum online to, you know, provide internet service, so the computers will have internet service through the department.
Well, I think any, you know, investigation or research you do is always a good idea. Now, how about the apparatus? Are they ready to receive computers to do the electronic reports that you spoke about? And, you know, the CIDS critical information and other things, blueprints and fire prevention? You know, you said the computers on the apparatus could be useful for a number of things?
Right, so New York State Health Department is going to start requiring us to do patient care reports on each EMS call that we go on. Currently, our medical director only wanted us to do them if we gave medication, like epinephrine for a anaphylactic allergic reaction, you know, any of the medications we give. So if we have to start doing it for all of them, if we buy tablets, like an Apple iPad or some sort of tablet, that can be used as an electronic patient care report. That's the only way the state will accept them. They used to accept paper copies. Now they'll only accept them as an EPCR, so an electronic patient care report. So that would help us comply with that requirement. Also, we've had the I Am Responding software, which can be installed on the tablets, and it gives, as we discussed, we can put pre-plans for certain buildings, you know, pictures, floor plans, say for the hospitals or the apartment buildings. We can have them on the maps. As the guys are going to the calls, they can click on the building, and, you know, they can have a lot of information. It works very successfully in Pelham. You know, Pelham helped me set it up. We have it working in the kitchen. I have one on my tablet. But, you know, I proposed this, as Commissioner Ranalone said, a year ago, and it was put on hold because we were doing the technology assessment with Sullivan Data. So that's been done, and they said that the tablets are a good idea, that it works. They specifically said Somer's Fire Department, I believe, uses the tablets and the fire trucks. So, yeah, so the rigs are, you know, we'd have to buy the mounts for them and have them installed, but, you know, other than that, they just work off a data signal from a phone company. And, you know, it's, whether it's Verizon, AT&amp;T FirstNet, those are usually on state contract. I know the AT&amp;T FirstNet is either on state or federal contract for the pricing, so...
And who would do the mounting?
The non-pierces, we would have Ruscon do it. So Tower Ladder 17, Engine 29, Engine 28, and Ladder 15 would be done by Ruscon, and the four pierces would be done by Firematic, because they service the pierces.
So then do all that research, find out which provider's best, get estimates for putting it all together, and that'll be on the agenda for the April meeting in two or three weeks.
Okay, very good.
Alright, so any other comments?
I just want to point out, Tom, that, you know, by using the Historical Society, we are saving a credit for the money from renting the bank spot.
And we're grateful to the Historical Society for making that offer and seeing it through. And, yes, I think it's an offer, you know, it's a good use of town property and interagency cooperation. Any comments from the public? Alright, then I'll make a motion to close the meeting, if I can get a second.
Well, before we close the meeting, I'd just like to congratulate firefighter Bill Odesso on his 29 years of service to the department and the residents of the town of Eastchester. At least tomorrow is his last day on the job.
Well, he's working now, so he'll get off duty at 8:00 AM in the morning. So he's working his last tour right now.
Unbelievable. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Good luck in here.
Yeah, congratulations to Billy.
Alright, then, again, I'll make another motion if anyone wants a second.
Hello?
Yes?
My name is Janet Murphy, and I live at 18 Whitehall Road in Interlaken.
Okay.
Um, two things. I want to express thanks for our fire department's response to the fire on Fieldland Lane, number one. Number two, I would like to know the process for fire investigation. I don't know if you, as commissioners, have the, um, the, I don't want to say authority, but know the process. Who calls in the investigation? How is the investigation done? And that's my question.
You know, Tom, let me just jump in for a second. Thank you for your call. The chief actually answered this question very eloquently. Now, he's, yeah, I was going to say, could be last month, but it may be two months ago. They're starting to meld together, so I apologize for that.
Okay.
But the chief did answer this, and that, we can, if you, we can, we can get that. It's available to the public, the meeting. The chief has answered that.
Thank you. Thank you. How would I get that?
He will, we, we... Uh, that's a good question. It's a, it is a, it's on the website. Is it, chief, is it on the website already?
Uh, January meeting should be, yes.
Okay.
Well, that was in February, the first February's meeting.
I...
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I haven't recorded. I don't know. I have to check and see if it's posted yet. Which one is the latest one that's posted?
It would be February 7th meeting, I believe.
I have February 6, and then February 17 was that really quick special meeting where we just opened and closed the meetings. So probably February 7 or January 7.
It was, it was a lengthier one.
Sorry, February 6. Yeah, that was two hours. That one was over two hours.
Four hours.
The chief answered that very well. Or chief answered that one very well already. And that could, and you can get to see that on the website.
I could just give her a quick answer if... Do you want me to just give her a quick answer?
Sure, sure.
So, so the state law says it's up to the fire chief to determine the cause of the fire. Since in Eastchester, we don't have anybody trained in fire investigation. Everybody's trained in suppression. We have, we have light training in fire investigation. You get it as part of your basic training. So we call in Westchester County Arson Task Force. We always request from our dispatchers at county control to have the cause and origin team come down and determine, especially when it's a large fire like that, because there's going to be probably a lot of lawsuits between the insurance companies. So we're not trained to testify in court on investigative issues. So they come, they came with four investigators to this fire. They took pictures. They'll do a full report. They only give us a summary report, and if they, you know, if the public wants the full report, they can foil it through Westchester County. They have a webpage. You just put foil Westchester County in Google, and it'll come up to a form, and you can request their investigative report. So we don't do the investigation in-house on a large fire.
Okay, thank you so much. And to get the fire chief's review, I can go to the town website, and then...
If you mean by the review, you mean if you mean our incident report, you can...
Your, 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 your meeting.
Oh, so go, yeah, go to YouTube and type in Eastchester FD, and it'll come up to our page, and then you'll see all the meetings on there. There's probably 50 of them.
Okay, alright. Thank you so much. I appreciate, I appreciate your comments, and thank you for responding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Any other comments from the public? Local 916? Alright, then I'll make the motion that we close our meeting.
A second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much.
Good night, thank you. Good night. Thank you.